On Thursday evening. On Sunday, February 10th, the Brookline PACS will hold its annual meeting in the MLK Room at Brookline High School, 7:00 PM with guest speaker, retired Judge Nancy Gertner. On Monday, February 11th, at 6:30 PM, in the school committee room on the fifth floor, Town Hall, the B-Space Committee will be meeting to hear more about school space needs, budget impacts, and educational programs that are being considered. Also on Monday, February 11th, at 7:00 PM, in the Devotion Cafeteria, there will be a neighborhood meeting with Chief O'Leary, and I believe Selectman Daley will be present to discuss this series of attacks in North Brookline and the ongoing effort to arrest the culprits and what preventative measures are being taken. And finally, also on Monday, February 11th, it's gonna be a busy night, in room 103 downstairs on the first floor in Town Hall, at 7:30, there will be a legislative roundtable with State Senator Cream and our representatives who will give updates on current legislation and the fiscal '14 budget. Any other comments, additions for Selectman Daley?
I just want to say to Selectman Goldstein and all the other Rotarians how very much I enjoyed the chocolate extravaganza. It was a wonderful event, and I hope you raised a lot of money, but the Otto's Pizza was there, and finally, after eating a lot of chocolate, I said, "I have to go eat some real food," so I got my slice of pizza to keep going. It was very nice.
It was a lot of chocolatey fun, I'll say that. I wish I had a number to report, but I won't know that until Thursday.
Well, we think it was pretty well attended, I will say that. It was full of people.
And I must say, I'd never been in that Pine Manor room before.
Yeah, it's gorgeous.
What a beautiful location.
It is.
What a treasure to have that room available.
And it seemed like a lot of people, you know, sometimes I recognize the same faces at a lot of these things, but this seemed to get a different crowd, and I wondered if some of the Pine Manor students had joined the event.
I think we've had a lot of Pine Manor students.
Ah, I see, okay. Selectman Binka?
Yes, Selectman Daley, in the eyes of some, chocolate is real food. Especially dark chocolate.
Well, we now know dark chocolate is good for you. That's good news.
That's right. I think I maybe ate a little more than was good for me, but, sorry.
Just following up on chocolate, there was a wonderful article about Serenade Chocolate in this morning's Globe.
Oh, yes, in the Globe. Yes, thank you for mentioning it.
And just about the craftsmanship of the chocolate and the work of the owner of Serenade Chocolate with immigrants to this area.
Right.
So it was just a terrific article.
And fabulous chocolates, too.
Absolutely. And on Saturday, there was a get-together for the New Year's of the Brookline Asian American Family Network.
Oh.
And I went to that and saw my first live Gangnam-style dancing with the kids.
Aha.
And this is high-energy stuff and a lot of fun. So that was well-attended, and I think people were very pleased at the first annual.
Well, that's great.
Year of the Snake is a plus.
It is the Year of the Snake, yes.
Okay, shall we now move to our real business? First item is approving the minutes from January 29th. Are there corrections or additions?
I do have some small edits, yes.
Okay, then I move that we approve the minutes as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman, whoops, Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Going around the table, sorry about that.
That's fine.
Okay, and Mr. Wigley, repairs to the Unified Arts Building.
Yes, good evening. The question before you is approval and execution of a contract in the amount of $91,950 to the firm of CSS Architects Incorporated of Wakefield. And this is for the design of exterior building envelope improvements, I won't say improvements, repairs to the Unified Arts Building.
I have a question. At the top, under the scope, it says, "Replace all the slate roof shingles," and then down under schematic design, it seems to waffle over whether we're replacing the slate roof shingles, where it says, "Preliminary details of options to fix and alternative roofing systems." Can you explain, please?
That was my question, too.
Sorry.
I thought the whole point of slate roof shingles was that they kind of last forever.
Yes, they last forever. So answer our question, please.
Well, the building was built in 191.
Yep.
And as far as we know, it's the original roof. And we had a study done some time ago that indicated that the roof itself is in poor condition, and some of the things they noted was that the tar paper under the slate has disintegrated in most areas, and they used steel nails years ago instead of what is currently used copper slate nails. And the nails are rusting and allowing the roof slates to become unfastened. And overall, it says the roof is in poor condition. So the roof needs to be replaced, and that's why we're at this point.
Okay, Selectman Daley?
Yeah, but wouldn't you take the slate shingles off, fix the undercoating, and then put the slate shingles back on?
I am not predisposed, I would say, in my personal opinion, to any particular fix. I think it's our duty to look at various options and see which is the best approach, considering all such items as material, cost, life cycle, and cost-benefit analysis. All that being said, we will be, you note in here, we're going to be meeting with preservation and the Building Commission and others. All of that will factor in here.
Well, I would certainly say, I mean, I'm willing to vote this, but I would certainly like them to look at the alternatives, as Selectman DeWitt mentioned, and not necessarily jump to the replacing those slate.
Yeah, yeah, part of the solution may be in reusing some or all of the slate.
Right, right.
But, you know, we're also going to look at potential non-slate options.
And can you, well, I don't think you're in a position to answer this question, but I guess you've already partly introduced it, namely, you've got a roof that's been there for 100 years plus, and I would say the standard for a replacement is equal quality. Even though it may be that after 100 years, this one is a little tired, if you can't do something of equal standard quality, then I think we really would be concerned. Okay?
I get it.
All right.
Quick question.
Sure, Selectman Goldstein.
Tony, I know a few high school students, and I hear from them from time to time that that building is exceptionally cold in the wintertime. I don't know if the windows have been replaced any time recently, or is it possible that any part of this scope of work might address the draftiness and general difficulty in keeping a good room temperature there?
No, I don't think so, because this is strictly roof and masonry work. In the budget, potentially, if we're considering replacing or redoing the slate roof in kind, that's extremely costly. And so it's going to be a challenge to make this project work for the building needs within the budget as it is, and it's not necessarily going to, it will not address any of those issues.
Do you know how old the windows are there?
Not off the top of my head.
The building was renovated, though, in the last 10 years, right? Or have I got my time wrong?
Well, there was some work done during the high school. I don't remember whether we replaced the windows or not. I mean, but the work on the gym building and the tappin' was very minimal as opposed to the rest of the campus at the time.
Right. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Wigley? Then I move that we approve and execute a contract in the amount of $91,950 for designer services for building envelope repairs at the Unified Arts Building. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Ditto, an inventory of signs.
Public Works is requesting that the Board of Selectmen award and execute contract with World Tech Engineering to perform a town-wide inventory of traffic signs and street signs. This study will locate an inventory of approximately 10,000 street signs within the public ways. Some of the 26 attributes that we will be collecting as part of this study include, but are not limited to, there'll be a unique sign ID number, there'll be a signed legend, a signed color, signed size, shape, signed height, and probably most importantly is the retro-reflectivity of the sign.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, is this, I noticed at some point in your letter to us, I think it says, or I guess this is Mr. Papasturgen's letter to us, it talks about traffic signs. So the street signs that, you know, those signs identifying streets that many people are concerned about, the historic signs, are they included in this or not?
They are.
Okay.
Yep. So upon completion of this, we'll be downloading the data to our GIS system as well as a Cottograph Workflow Management System. And this will be a tremendous plus for the DPW in that our work order system is the Cottograph system. This will make it very easy to track what work's been completed and what the costs were. And you might ask, "Why are we doing this at this time?" And the reason being is that the Federal Highway Administration is requiring cities and towns to establish and implement a sign assessment or management plan that will retain the minimum retro-reflectivity as outlined in the manual on uniform traffic control devices. So this is a regulation that was precipitated by the FHA, and it's codified in the MUTCD manual. Now, in part, it states in that manual that, and it's very similar to what was previously said, is that public agency or officials having jurisdiction shall use an assessment or management method that is designed to maintain sign retro-reflectivity at or above the minimum levels in Table 28-3. Now, as part of that manual, they said there'd be a completion date by 2015, and the FHA got a lot of feedback on that, and since that date was established, they modified their regulation to allow communities to replace traffic signs when they are worn out rather than replacing signs on a specific timetable. So that's a big plus for us.
I would like to ask, it seems to me that one of the things that could happen here, and it could be inadvertent, but it would not be desirable, and I'm kind of following up on Selectman Daley's question, that we somehow identify our historic street signs as non-compliant, and frankly, that would not comply with the town's desires and intent.
Right. They did respond partially to that, in that they, if you just wait one second. In the latest final ruling, they said, "The FHA will allow communities to retain historic street name signs in historic districts." Now, I know that doesn't cover the whole town, but at least a portion of the signs will be exempt from this ruling.
But just to be clear, I believe what I'm hearing is historic signs, as they fail, fall, break, whatever, that are not in a designated local historic district, are not going to be replaced properly with similar signs?
This isn't to say you can't have those signs in place.
Okay, well, I'm very concerned that we lock ourselves into some sort of database that has a red flag that says, "Now you have to put up a new sign."
That question I can't answer at this point in time.
You know, that's an issue, actually, that we've been going around and around on in the town, and my understanding was that the old signs could be retained, and indeed, we were even looking at redoing the signs, having the old signs replicated because they had been mistakenly taken down.
Right.
And...
Well, I do remember when we had some meetings on this a number of years ago, and I believe you telling me, Mr. Ditto, or telling those of us at the meeting, that our historic signs did not have the retro-reflectivity that they were supposed to have under these rules.
That's true.
And so I, too, am very concerned about creating this database that identifies a bunch of our signs as not passing the standards when we very much want to retain those signs. And I don't know whether we should just leave the street signs off this inventory, or if we could identify those signs that are the original signs as historic, we put that designation on them, even if they're not in a historic district, but any sign that was that original sign with the raised letters, you know better than I do what the description is, but have those identified on this description as each one of them that's like that as historic, so that if anyone looks at that database...
Part of the issue here is that we've got some existing historic districts. We may have new ones in places where those historic signs exist, and we want to save them.
Right.
What's the penalty if we don't do this?
I don't know.
Probably isn't any. I may not be prepared to vote this.
Yeah, I'd be happy to hold this one also.
I want to hold it. I think we need to have more information. I'm not comfortable, it sounds to me as though there is a high risk that we would create something that would almost target these historic signs for replacement, and I do not think that is something that we would choose to do. So we need some more information, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Could you send the actual regulation around the federal highway regulation, or there's also a reference in Andy's letter to the state statute, Chapter 90, Section 18. That I can get, but I'm just, you know, whatever is the supposed mandate of this, is it possible for you to send that around to members of the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
And I wonder, Mr. Kluckner, if we could check with the, if you could check with the historic preservation people here, Jean and Amorata and...
Greer Hardwick.
Greer Hardwick, and see if there's any way we can get some kind of designation for our historic signs without making...
I thought we'd gone through that.
Senator Carey's office, I thought it got him something.
Yeah, right. I thought we had a federal waiver through Senator Carey's office.
I'm not sure we ever received the waiver, but...
Well, we certainly were told about it.
I thought we were commenting on their proposed regulations, and it sounds to me like they've accommodated to some extent the town's concerns or relevant concerns in their regulations, but we'll find out more.
Yeah, and I think there are some other communities with historic signs that are similar to ours who have sort of formed a little, you know, group, so we ought to find out about that, too. So we'll hold this one. Thank you, Mr. Ditto.
Yep.
Next, we have a couple of temporary beverage licenses. Any questions about these?
No.
And I move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Brookline Library Foundation in connection with an Oscar celebration on February 12th at the Coolidge Corner Branch Library, and that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the BU Bach Funk Student Group for reception to be held on February 16th at 808 Commonwealth Avenue. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is Puppet Showplace. Do we have someone here to speak? Would you mind coming just up to the podium?
Good evening.
So I think we've asked you to come because this seems to be a different pattern of performance compared to previously, and we're actually not accustomed to seeing a list like this requesting temporary licenses, so we'd like to hear what you're doing.
Sure, certainly I can speak to that. My name's Bradley Dugan. I'm the operations manager at the Puppet Showplace Theater, and we have been there in addition to the many, many children's shows you may be familiar with during the day, been doing shows for adults as well for the past several years. Usually, we'll have one every month or so. This year, we're having usually two each month between our Puppet Slam Series, which we have a showing there once every other month, and the Story Slam Series with Mass Mouth, which we're presenting every month now through the beginning of the summertime. We've had this show series for a number of years, but only recently have we identified liquor sales there as a potential revenue stream for us by offering those in exchange for donations to the theater. We are a nonprofit organization, which has been in the community for over 38 years now, and donations are obviously a very big part of what keeps us alive, and we found that people coming to these slams have been very responsive and happy to give in exchange for this amenity while they are at the theater. So we're requesting these licenses. We've thought to put them all in at the same time for now through the beginning of the summertime.
I would say my, you know, at some times in the past, the Puppet Showplace has had some, maybe disagreements is too strong, but there's been some neighbors that have been very, right above, and they're very concerned about noise. Now, I haven't heard anything lately, so did you do some soundproofing? I'm just wondering if you're having more events at night, and with, you know, alcohol, which, you know, sometimes people raise their voices a little more in a party kind of atmosphere, if that might not create some tension with the neighbors?
I understand, and I think I remember one of the incidents you're referring to, I think maybe three or four years ago. That was solved some time ago through soundproofing of the theater and the ceilings in both the theater and the lobby, and we haven't received any kind of complaints since then. We have been, as I said, having these adult shows, usually one each month for a number of years. This is a slight increase in the number of shows for adults in the evening, but not by much, and we haven't seen much of an impact in terms of the audience behavior with the addition of the alcohol, and we very rarely have anyone past 11 o'clock at night, certainly not past 11:30.
My inclination would be to approve the first three and make sure we don't have any kind of issue, and then they can come back later for the last two.
And I would like to be sure that you have talked to our, I know you've had our police officer who reviews these applications check to make sure, I know that you are Safe Service, you have Safe Service certified people. Normally, when we approve things like this, we're doing it to a not-for-profit for a third-party event, okay? So that's part of why we asked you to come, because this is a little untypical for us, and there are some restrictions about your ability to sell alcohol, and I would like to be absolutely certain that you're not in violation. So I will probably agree to vote for, what are you proposing?
I'm saying the first three.
The first three. But then I also want to check with our town council and make sure that what you're doing is actually okay.
Certainly, thank you very much.
So she may want to talk to you about it.
Question about how many temporary licenses?
Well, they're allowed so many per year, and I think this is not even close to the number. I think it's about 30, so that's not the issue. But typically, what we see would be what I'm going to call a venue, you guys, and somebody wants to hold a fundraiser there or some other thing like that, not something that is being held by the organization for its own benefit. And that's the point that I really want to make sure is okay.
I see.
For your benefit and for ours, frankly.
Certainly, thank you.
All right, so we just need to get that sorted out.
And if it helps to frame that, Ms. Chairman, we are a very small organization, which for a long time has been responsible for our own fundraising.
Sure, we do understand, all right? It's just that we don't want you to be in a position where you're doing something that you might not be allowed to do, okay?
Thank you very much.
So we'll ask town council to follow up and probably talk to you about exactly what's allowed. Anyway, so let's move to approve temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Puppet Showplace Theater in connection with events to take place on February 14th, March 19th, and, sorry, March 9th and March 14th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, we have several candidates for boards and commissions. First on the calendar is Commission for the Disabled, Ms. Johansson. Just come forward, please.
How are you?
Hi there.
Hi. We're interested to hear, just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Commission for the Disabled.
Well, I am a lifelong resident of Brookline, and my family consists of my mom, my son, and I, and my son has what we expect to be a lifelong disability. I am the relative of another family member with a lifelong disability. I am intimately acquainted with supporting people whose disabilities or impairments might not be visible, and I'm interested in learning more about how to support people whose disabilities might be more visible. I am hoping to go into health policy and management as I go forward in my career and hope to do disability policy on a bigger level, so I'd like to start to get my feet wet in my own community.
Okay, questions from members of the board?
I...
Selectman Baker is our liaison to the commission, so...
And I would just note that Ms. Johansson has attended a couple of meetings and actually contributed to those meetings, so I have only good things to say about her.
Okay.
And she's also a new resident of Olmsted.
Yeah, right, yeah, which you heard me speak there.
She's up there, and it was when you and I spoke, that's it.
Okay, Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I know that, I believe that the commission, we're supposed to appoint mostly people who have disabilities, but there is one or two slots, I know, for people who have family members with disabilities, so, and there's certainly a lot of vacancies now, so.
We do have vacancies.
Sounds like Ms. Johansson is a good candidate.
Right. Okay, well, thank you very much for your interest, and you'll hear from us in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
The next, what's the next on the list? Preservation Commission, Ms. Saidian? So same question, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the Preservation Commission.
I've been a Brookline resident for the last 23 years. I have appreciation of culture, art, and humanity in general. Currently, I'm a commissioner for the art in Brookline, and I see it as a next step to my... to my field of interest. I have a background in design as well as I'm a real estate broker, and I stay very much into my field to learn more as well as contribute to the community.
Okay. Do you, have you ever gone to a Preservation Commission meeting?
Not to the meetings, but I have been to different seedings with the commissioners, with the rare and to find about different properties and also...
So you talked to the staff, probably?
I talked to the staff.
Right, right.
Not yet.
You haven't gone to an actual commission meeting?
No.
That was my question.
As soon as I applied for it, they sent me...
Okay. It's not a requirement, it was just curiosity. Other questions for Ms. Saidian? Yes, Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I know there's always some tension when people are trying to renovate their home if they live in a historic district. And do you have any thoughts on, you know, what, how to strike the balance between people being able to do something that, you know, they can do and that's reasonably affordable and so forth, but still historic?
Well, I can, I live in a historic home. I live on Tappan Street, and I renovate the entire building, and I preserved as much as I could. I ran over the truck to get my doorknobs back. Basically, I'm very much interested to preserve as much building as I can.
Okay. Any other questions? Then, thank you very much for your interest, and I should have said before also, we're trying to do appointments maybe next week, I'm not sure how soon we'll get to this, but you'll be notified in writing when the appointments are made.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
And now, information technology, Mr. Gallagher.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Good to see you again, Betsy.
Nice to see you also, and I'm not even going to repeat the question, you just get to speak.
Sure. I've been a Brookline resident for more years than I care to remember, but my family has deep roots in Brookline. I've been a volunteer at a number of organizations, had the pleasure of working closely with Betsy when she was Executive Director of the Community Foundation. I was on the board for six years and treasurer for three. My wife has also volunteered for a number of organizations over the years, and I sold myself for a company last year, and I found myself with a little bit of free time on my hands. And I have significant and deep IT experience. I've been a technologist for 40 years, have multiple degrees in business, and I happened to be speaking with the CIO, and we were talking about the utilization of speech recognition and text-to-speech and messaging and all of the things to help town residents, especially those with disabilities, reach into the town information center without having to get ahold of a lot of people at 8 o'clock at night or on the weekends. That happens to be an area where I do have significant expertise, and he said, "I'd really like you to apply for this position." So he pushed me here. Not really, but he said, "I'd really like you to be on my team if, is it all possible." So I said, "Well, this seems to be right up my alley, so here I am."
Well, certainly sounds like it, and you are definitely, I think, would be joining a group where you will be comfortable also.
I did compliment him on, based on my experience with other towns, the town of Brookline's website and the information is in the top rank.
Oh, nice to hear that.
And really cutting-edge compared to a lot of, excuse me, a lot of other towns, and my goal is to help keep it there.
Well, we are very, as you may be aware, interested in improving our interactive technology. And I know that the IT department has been helping with applications and trying to make it easier for citizens to communicate. We have our Brook Online system that we hope people are using more and more, and so seems well timed. Questions for Mr. Gallagher?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Baker?
No, I know John also through the Brookline Community Foundation and your work there, and...
And the old Soul Playground where our kids went to preschool together.
Exactly, exactly. And just looking at the resume, you've certainly been in the area and working on IT, so I think it's terrific.
Well, I'm delighted that you have the free time, so we can benefit from it.
So am I. So is my wife.
Yeah, well, that's great. All right. You, I'm sure, are aware then, because I'm sure Kevin told you that there is a vacancy, we have no other applicants at this point in time, and we'll probably be making our appointments in the next week or so, and you'll be notified in writing.
Great.
But in the meantime, you're free to go to their meetings.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
Okay, now we're going to have a little update from the town administrator on his recruitment plans for a new Planning and Community Development Director.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, it's been several months since our former planning director, Jeff Levine, has left. As you recall, he went to become the planning director in the city of Portland, Maine. I've had a chance to say hello to Jeff a couple times, and through his boss, who I am a colleague with, I check in, and he's doing very well, so for all you...
He and I had a conversation in which he said, "You know, the population of Portland, Maine and the population of Brookline is very, very similar."
Wow, really?
Oh, yeah.
Because Portland really looks like more of a city.
Well, it feels like a city, doesn't it? But it's a regional center. But it was very, it was interesting to me to hear. I think Portland may be 60,000, but it's not that different. It's not as big as you think it is.
But as you said, it is a regional center, largest city in the state, I believe. But in any event, you know, we have been working very deliberately on this, and there was a method to that madness. You know, we've had some study of our planning department in the past, not that long ago, and we wanted to have an opportunity to let that sit for a while and also to give an interim management team an opportunity to work with the department and work through a few issues. And I think it's been very positive. Kara Bruton, who's our acting director, along with Polly Salco and Joviola, have really tried hard to take into consideration some of the findings in the study that talked about silos in the department and the inability for some divisions within the department to talk to one another and to collaborate. And I think they've done a really good job in trying to address that issue. I'm not sure quite honestly how big of an issue it was, but it's been talked about, and the department and the staff have been working on it. And I've seen some improvements, and I'm very pleased with that. I also was quite honestly, frankly, looking to see if Kara would be interested in the position as a candidate. She is not, and I've asked a lot of different ways and a lot of different times, but the answer continues to be no. So we will, at this point, I think we're ready to go out into the market and to look for, recruit for a full-time and permanent Planning and Community Development Director in essentially the same job description that was vacated by Mr. Levine. So my goal is to begin the recruitment process and appoint a search group as soon as possible because I want them to be more involved in the recruitment upfront than normally would be the case. And so I respectfully request the board's authorization to commence that process and to designate one of your own to the search group. I have, as you know, pointed out that I had asked Ken Goldstein, who was formerly a member of the planning board, to serve on that group, and he has graciously agreed to do so.
So, questions? Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I think it's probably a good idea to get going on this, and I'm sure Selectman Goldstein will do a good job. But I'd have to ask, now that it's been pointed out to me that Portland and Brookline have a similar population, they have a jet port there, Mel.
They have cruise ships.
Yeah, when are we going to get a jet port?
I would rather have cruise ships myself, but... Well, I'm just going to comment that I'm glad that we had the opportunity to sort of test out some of the information that the consultants provided before going ahead. But I, certainly my observation is that there's a very, the department now is in a good place, it's being productive. And what I do know is that Kara, having said she does not wish to be a candidate, would like to get her old job back, so I think that's what her goal is. Dick?
Yes, I, Mr. Kleckner is not the only person who has asked Kara in many ways whether she might be willing to apply for the permanent job. And I think she's done a terrific job as interim planning director, and I'm sure will do a terrific job when she returns to her own position. As she told me, she really enjoys the work in her other job and does not enjoy the administrative work. So I think she's a terrific asset to the town, and it's terrific that she's been able to do this for this period.
Mel, I wonder if you might just speak to the need for making this replacement? I think somebody hearing this might say, "You seem to be working fine with one less, one less chief in that department." And I know it to be otherwise, and I wonder if you could just, you know, for the record, make sure that it's clear that we need another staff member.
Sure. Well, we don't have anyone willing to step up into this role, so we do need to recruit someone into the department head position. And clearly, you need, for a department of that size and the scope of work they do, you need somebody who's in charge, who reports directly to me and the board, and is responsible for setting the goals and the overall administrative direction of the department. So clearly, we need a director for the department. And, you know, once we fill that position, you know, we'll be at full strength as well in terms of budgeting, and that's a very busy department. I think last year, we did increase a part-time preservation staff person by a bit because of the involvement by the historic districts, the demolition bylaw, the new NCD commission. And so I definitely think this is one of our busier departments and requires full staffing at this point.
I mean, I've pointed out to people, but I think over the last 10 years, many, many of our warrant articles have added to the responsibilities of the planning department in one way or another. And people sometimes don't consider that, you know, as they're, as we pass more and more of these warrant articles with requirements and need for some staff time to see that they're implemented.
Yeah, other people don't see the weekly agenda for the planning board, the ZBA that we do, and know how many cases they're responsible for.
Yeah, I would say the Collins Center study did document some of those demands. And so for anybody who wanted to see for themselves some of the justification for the staffing that currently exists in the department, I think the Collins Center actually did a good job in documenting those kind of demands in the department.
And I would say, it seems, you're right, Selectman Goldstein, to ask the question, because it seems, "Oh, the planning department, what do they do?" But in fact, there are a wide variety of administrative and regulatory responsibilities, including our affordable housing programs, that people don't necessarily think of as part of the planning department. So you're absolutely right to make that comment. And since we did just appoint the final version of the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission, that's a new responsibility for the preservation staff that they didn't have before, so there's a workload, a sufficient workload, I would say. Okay, so do you want us to take a vote to authorize you to fill this vacancy?
I would.
Okay. Then I move that we authorize the town administrator to fill a vacancy in the position of Planning and Community Development Director. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Just keep us posted on your progress. Next item, town elections. Mr. Ward, come and tell us all of the changes. It will be better in the end, I think, right?
Unfortunately, yes. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Town Administrator, I respectfully appear before you this evening to request that the board reconsider and rescind their vote of January 15th, 2013, which set the date for the annual town election as Tuesday, May 7th, 2013. As you're aware, the Board of Selectmen has the authority to alter that date under General Bylaw Article 2.1.7. On Friday, February 1st, 2013, we officially received a copy of the Governor's Precepts directing towns to call the special state election to fill the vacancy in the office of a United States Senator for Tuesday, June 25th, 2013. On that same day, we also received an election calendar for that special state election issued by the Secretary of the Commonwealth, which calls for the special state primary to be held on Tuesday, April 30th, 2013, exactly one week prior to the currently scheduled annual town election of May 7th, 2013. After very careful consideration, I am recommending that the board change the date of the annual town election to April 30th, 2013, so that both the special state primary and the annual town election will be held on the same day. While holding two elections on the same day has its own set of unique administrative challenges, conducting two elections within seven days of each other presents many more. Having both elections on the same day will also allow voters greater access to both ballots and generate a cost-saving somewhere in the vicinity of $45,000 to the town of Brookline. For those three reasons, I urge the board to change the date of the annual town election for the town of Brookline to Tuesday, April 30th, 2013.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Ward? Yes, Selectman Daley?
It's not really a question, but I, you know, we have historically had some issues getting turnout at our town elections, which, as I keep explaining to people, it actually is their most important election because that's their local taxes, et cetera. And how they're spent, and who their representatives are in town here. But anyway, I think this will actually, it certainly would be crazy to have two elections a week apart, and I think that our turnout would suffer even more than usual. And the town election, had we just, you know, asked people to come and vote the week before, and we would be the afterthought, I suspect. So I think both elections will benefit by being on the same day, and I assume we'll save some money by doing it that way.
Hmm.
What's the cost of, for your...
The general cost of an election is $70,000. The special state elections, this election scheme that was devised by the legislature in, what, 2009, 2010, was deemed by Division of Local Mandates to be an unfunded state mandate. So I expect that we'll be fully funded for the special state primary. And if we hold the state election, the town election on the same day, there will be some costs. I mean, there'll be, there are some requirements, we have to have like two different voting lists, two different sets of paperwork, more people there, ultimately more training. But essentially, the big-ticket items like personnel and primarily personnel, we could probably save as much as $45,000.
But you only have to do one setup and all of those kinds of things?
One setup, one election machine, but two sets of ballots.
Right.
And two sets of books, because those who may be qualified to vote in the town election may not be qualified to vote in the state primary, so we have to keep two separate books.
Ah, I see. So does that mean, you know, the machine where you put your ballot into when it gets counted, are you going to need to have double?
No, presumably if you chose to, and it's your choice, it's not required, but if you chose to both take a town election ballot and a state primary ballot, you mark those, you check out at both checklists, you would insert both ballots into the machine, and they would be counted separately at the end of the evening as a state primary election and as a town election. The machine is able to recognize, distinguish between the two.
Okay. Good. Selectman Goldstein?
Thanks. I want to thank Town Clerk Ward for checking into this. Even before the state primary election was set, Patrick already got to work on investigating this, on the possibility that it would happen. And he and I spoke, he had some reservations.
That's our Patrick.
Yes, yes. Not the governor Patrick, but the clerk Patrick. There are definitely some logistical challenges about conducting the two elections on one day. And Patrick went to his town clerk gurus, and he'll tell you that there's one town clerk who was dead-set against the idea, and another town clerk who thinks it's the only way to go. So this is not without considerable extra work and challenge, and, you know, the logistics of it... the logistics of it are important to get right, because if it, if it doesn't go right...
Yeah, let me just say this, is that it's been done before. It can be done. It's, it's, it's not particularly easy, but it can be done. Most clerks would rather not do it. I know that historically, except for this circumstance, the Secretary of State's office recommends against it, only because there could be confusion on the part of the election workers. But generally speaking, if we properly train our workers, and we, and we properly set up things, it should go relatively smoothly.
Selectman Binka?
Right. With, with this vote today, assuming, and I assume we will vote to move the election, will nomination papers for town offices be available tomorrow?
I've got everything ready, set to go for tomorrow, if you vote today for April 30.
So people, people, candidates for town meeting, for selectmen, for town offices, will be able to pick papers up tomorrow?
Papers will be available tomorrow, along with the book that where we recorded papers being taken out. All correspondence to town meeting members via incumbency are scheduled to go out in the mail tomorrow, as well as the incumbents, town wives. And the calendar will be posted on the website this evening, if you voted tonight.
Great. Very good.
Can I, one follow up on that? Is there, is there a bylaw that requires a certain amount of time between the day when the papers are available to be pulled and the election? And are we, are we in any way violating that bylaws?
No, there's nothing in the general laws or the bylaws that link the distribution of the nomination papers to any, any particular election date. Those, those dates, the dates that are really of concern are by, in the general laws and their filing deadlines, not, not availability deadlines.
Good. And how long will people have, assuming they pull their papers tomorrow?
If they, if they pull their papers tomorrow, you would have until March 12 for the annual town election to file with, with the Board of Registros for certification.
Good. Thank you.
And this, there's actually been some correspondence on the Town Meeting Members Association website about this. This does not change the date of town meeting, nor does this change the date for individuals to get warrant articles filed for town meeting, which remains March 14 at noon.
Correct. There is no link.
So this is just for the papers for the election?
Right. Okay. Any other questions before we undertake the votes? All right. Then first, I move that we reconsider the board vote of January 15, 2013, setting the annual town election date for Tuesday, May 7, 2013. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then I move that we rescind the vote of January 15, setting the annual town election for Tuesday, May 7, 2013. All in favor of rescinding, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, I move that we set Tuesday, April 30, 2013, as the date for the annual town election. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ward, you have your marching orders.
Thank you.
And your calendar. Next item is consideration of a resolution having to do with Norfolk County. And I think we have a, an updated, yes, we've got an updated version of the language. Selectman Goldstein, this is your area.
Yep.
Do you have some comments or thoughts about this going forward?
Well, without, without restating the whole case, I think I've mentioned before that I'm, I, I support this resolution. I think it drives home the point that we've been trying to make about, about the county. But I do appreciate and also support the revisions that have been proposed by Mr. Kleckner, which, you know, aside from a few corrections of typos and, you know, correcting some, some, some finer points in the, in the warehouse clauses, I think the pertinent point is that it, we express our commitment to pursue the withdrawal from Norfolk County government and/or to support other mechanisms to eliminate the inequitable county assessment. And I think that's a very salient point. I think there are other measures that will eliminate the inequity without, you know, necessarily requiring us to withdraw. And I think the, the parties who brought this to our attention are in agreement that those measures would be all, as satisfactory.
Reasonable.
As satisfactory as withdrawals.
Okay. Other comments, members of the board?
No, I'm happy with Mr. Kleckner's revisions.
Okay.
But I think we should move ahead.
Well, I think because this is of some significance, I'm going to read it all out. The resolution that we are proposing to adopt states as follows. Whereas in 1997 and 1998, the General Court of the Commonwealth dissolved most county governments within Massachusetts, including Berkshire, Essex, Franklin, Hampton, Hampshire, Middlesex, Suffolk, and Worcester. And whereas, two of the dissolved counties became part of a regional council government, while six counties remained in operation, including Barnstable, Bristol, Norfolk, Plymouth, Nantucket, and Dukes. And whereas, most of the functions, services, and duties of the dissolved county governments were transferred to state government jurisdiction, including the recording of property transactions within the registries of deeds and the management of correctional facilities by the offices of sheriff. And whereas, the Commonwealth also took on responsibility for funding the continuing liabilities associated with those dissolved county governments, such as pensions and other post-employee, sorry, employment benefits, while the counties that were not dissolved remain burdened with these obligations. And whereas, 70% of the population of Massachusetts now resides within jurisdictions not covered by county government. And whereas, it is unfair and inequitable that municipalities where county government has been dissolved receive essentially the same services as municipalities within existing counties, but are not required to pay an assessment for these services or the liabilities accumulated from prior county government operations. And whereas, the town of Brookline is paying a mandatory assessment to fund Norfolk County government in the amount of $715,791 in fiscal year 2013. And whereas, county assessments are based on a municipality's property value, rather than the benefits the municipality may receive based on population, proximity to county facilities, et cetera. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the town of Brookline hereby commits to pursue its withdrawal from Norfolk County government and/or to support mechanisms to eliminate the inequitable county assessment. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
So, and can I ask now, Mr. Kleckner, are you then going to send this around to the other cities and towns within Norfolk County, or to ask if they want to?
Yes, so the, yes, so the idea is that there was a, a fact sheet that accompanies the resolution. I need to edit that a little bit more, but that's, I will send that to each chief executive officer, which could be the selectman in towns, a mayor in a city, in some cases, the town manager, and ask them, tell them that we've adopted this resolution and seek their support of adopting a similar resolution.
So, and then, and I assume we will also send this to our state legislators?
Our legislators, right. The county and other interested parties, yeah.
Maybe we should talk to them on February 11, when we're all assigned to other places to be, the legislative roundtable, the same night as many other obligations.
I can tell you, I have completed my, my sit down with each of members of our legislative delegation at this point. And, and I think we have the support of all, all five, including Senator...
Oh, good. That's very nice to hear. Good for you, and thank you for doing that.
I'm going to try to make it to the legislative roundtable, if I can, after the other meeting.
Well, the possibility is, yeah, right. And, and we might either, one of us possibly, we'll see. Depends on how things go. It's the one night where there are so many things scheduled that it's complicated. Okay. The next item on the calendar is a discussion with regard to a charge, possibly a potential charge, to the Committee on Town Organization and Structure. I think before we start our conversation, I'd, I'd like to just very briefly go over some of the history.
Sure.
Before we take up the charge, because I do believe this is important, for, for folks to somehow have a context for this conversation. And now I'm trying to find my carefully put together, all right. I sort of did a little outline, because I was confused. Part of the, well, what is driving this is that we have two bylaws and two appointed entities whose responsibilities seem to overlap. And these are overlaps that seem to have occurred over history. I think they're probably not intended, but they certainly have recently become sufficiently confusing, that we were working to try to clarify the roles and responsibilities. The two entities are the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission and our Human Resources Board, and they're two departments. And they seem to be charged with overlapping responsibilities. But I want to just walk quickly through some history. The Human Relations Commission bylaw was adopted in 1970, but it was actually in response to some very significant historic events in the 60s. We passed civil rights legislation, and there was a Kerner Commission report that talked about why minorities were angry and rioting, and there was a lot of disruption going on. And I can tell you that I was at the Democratic Convention in Chicago in 1968 and got gassed, so I know what it was like. Having said that, there was a very strong and passionate discussion about civil rights. And in Brookline, there was a committee called the Committee on Urban Responsibility, who actually met over almost 18 months, apparently. The documentation is quite extraordinary, and it's beautifully written, I will have to say, but very long, like 80 pages. There were 130 citizen members who'd met over 18 months, and they were making recommendations in response to the conditions at the time, and particularly to the Kerner Report on Civil Unrest. And they divided into subcommittees. They looked at jobs, they looked at housing, they looked at community relations, they looked at education, and they looked at finance, which I thought was confusing at first, but what I really think they were talking about was bank lending practices, which is to say redlining. Anyway, out of this recommendation, out of this report, two bylaws were passed. One established the Human Relations Commission with 12 members, and had some general duties, which I'm just going to refer, I've sort of extracted here, but in general, this is what they were, this is a quotation, "with developing opportunities within Brookline and the metropolitan area for those who are discriminated against, to increase communication across racial lines, to destroy stereotypes, to halt polarization, to end distrust and hostility, and to create common ground for efforts toward public order and social justice, and to increase the capacity of public and private institutions to respond to the problems of the disadvantaged." And then there were some other tasks that were assigned to the commission. To adopt affirmative action guidelines, to administer affirmative action programs relating to contracts, to investigate complaints charting discrimination or unlawful conduct, to institute and assist development of educational programs, and to promote equal rights and opportunities. There was a second bylaw, which charged with the Human Relations Commission with oversight on compliance with non-discrimination laws with regard to the awarding of contracts, both from the awarding side, and also to oversee that the bidders be in compliance with non-discrimination laws. The commission drafted affirmative action guidelines, and they were modified over time. The first were adopted in 1973, with modifications and amendments in 1976, 1977, 1979. In 1988, the town enacted a fair housing bylaw, which also gave oversight to the Human Relations Commission as the local enforcement agency, basically, kind of, as I understand it, enacting what the state Massachusetts Commission against Discrimination, implementing the same kinds of regulations and compliance issues that the MCAD does at the state level. Somewhere along the way, and I, I don't have the answer to this, Youth Resources was added to the responsibilities for the commission. And I, I note that in the original Committee on Urban Responsibility report, there was actually a recommendation that the town establish childcare centers, because that would widen employment opportunities. So there's a connection there, and I'm sure there were other connections with youth later. But that came through as an amendment to the Human Relations bylaw. The selectmen adopted and updated policies against sexual harassment in the 1990s, and in 1994, the la, was the last time our affirmative action, equal opportunity plan was adopted. In the meantime, in the year 2000, in response to a coincidence that the, at that time, chair and director of the then Personnel Department and Personnel Board both retired, the town invited the Mass Municipal Association to review our Personnel Department and to recommend improvements and updating our practices. And what came out of that was a set of recommendations, in particular, to end the practice of having volunteers. The then-chair of the Personnel Board was actively engaged in negotiating collective bargaining agreements, and the, the bylaw was intended to end that practice. In 2000, therefore, a bylaw was adopted establishing a Human Resources Department to replace personnel, and assigning to the HR Board the responsibility of dealing with a spectrum of employee issues, including recruitment, hiring, development, training, retention, protection against discrimination and harassment, and grievance procedures. Currently, collective bargaining is conducted by our HR Director and in association with Labor Council. Board members must have qualifications such as employment administration experience, labor or employment law experience, human resources or labor law academicians, or business executive experience. Sort of, one other item that affects this is that in 2009, Town Meeting approved that the non-public safety employees of the town no longer participate in the state's civil service, in state's civil service, which opened the pool of candidates to be hired, although our public safety employees continue to be covered by civil service. Anyway, the Human Relations and Human Resources activities clearly have a certain amount of overlap now. And it seems appropriate for us to try to help clarify, and I hope, I have to say, I was quite inspired by reading the Core Report, perhaps even give the Human Relations Commission more strength with regard to some of the other tasks that were assigned to them, for example, fair housing, around which I think there is nothing much being done today. Anyway, that's sort of a historic synopsis, which gets us to Selectman Daley's proposal.
Yes. Well, I, and we had heard from Rita McDowney, who's here tonight and is currently serving as Chair of the Human Relations Commission. I won't, I won't say Youth Resources every time, but you can...
Assume.
Assume that I've, that I've said it. So that, they are, they are, would, would like some clarification as to exactly what they're... So they are, they are, would like some clarification as to exactly what their role should be. And it is clear, as you just explained, that, you know, over time, the, the two, the Human Relations Commission and the Human Resources Board have sort of overstepped each other to some extent, and it isn't clear who is supposed to be doing what now. So I did write a charge, the charge is a couple paragraphs, and then there's some background material that I added on, and I, Patty Correa, Assistant Town Counsel, did extensively edit my background facts that I wrote, so, but I hope, I hope we got it, got them accurately. So, and I know Chairman DeWitt, you, I initially wrote this as a charge to the Committee on Town Organization and Structures, but I, you have had some conversation with them, and I'd like you to tell everybody what the gist of your conversation was, so they're probably not the appropriate place for this to go now.
Well, I did talk to the Chair of the Committee on Town Organization and Structure, who said that she felt that while they would be more than willing and interested in taking this up, they, her suggestion was that we might be better served with an independent committee and give it time and the ability to really review the existing bylaws, to look at best practices wherever they are, both with regard to employment, but also the other concepts that are embodied in the original Core Report, which had to do with making us a welcoming community. They certainly talked about the fact that, at that time, it was clear and documented that people who wanted to live here found barriers to being able to purchase a home or rent. I don't believe that's true today, but I don't know anymore. And I guess one of the things that we have neglected is the broader responsibilities that were originally being considered at the time that recommendation was made. So I, my guess is, just in the dynamics of things, what the Chair of the Committee on Town Organization and Structures suggested was that they would welcome recommendations for bylaw amendments or revisions, and then they would comment on that, but she wasn't sure that it was appropriate for them to undertake a broader review, and that's, that was really her response.
Okay. And I should say that, and I tried to make this clear in, in the charge that I wrote, that it, the area of overlap is to do with town employment issues.
In particular, yes.
And there are other issues that are, have been historically assigned to, to Human Relations that the Human Resources Board has nothing to do with and would not, you know, get involved in. So probably my thought now is that, given the discussion you had with the Chairman of the CTONS, is that a Selectmen's Committee would be the appropriate place to get going on taking a look at this. And that's what I would suggest, but I'm certainly interested to hear what Ms. McNally and others have to say about it.
Or you want to, let's, let's first say, do members of the Board have questions at this point in time?
Not yet.
No? Okay. Then Ms. McNally, if you'd like to come up to the podium? And I should explain, you are the Chair of the
Temporary Chair.
Temporary Chair of the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission.
And we're going to be speaking about two, the ways to increase workplace diversity, right? That's what's on the table, as well as some of the other conflict and duplication. And the Human Relations Commission, we were there doing these things, and then the Human Resources took over some of the duties because of new bylaws. So, and I want to say something that I hope I don't forget, and that is, I don't agree with you, Madam Chair, that this should be a Selectmen's Committee.
I said an independent committee.
Independent. It'd be better for the community if it's a moderators' committee, and that we call on both educational institutions and others, so that it's not a suspect or tainted group, so that we can take it out of that suspicion area.
And, well, it's a Selectmen's Committee, we can appoint
Well, the moderator can appoint two.
It's not going to be just the Selectmen on the Selectmen's Committee.
No, I understand that, I understand that, you know.
Quite a variety of people.
But it might get us moving faster if it's a moderators' committee. It might not, I mean, you can leave it up to Town Meeting if you wish. And one other thing that I wanted to say upfront is that our commission, the makeup of the Human Relations Commission should really reflect the composition of the community. And we have data from the census that tells us that we have a growing Asian population, Hispanic population, and I think the African-American population has remained constant. So I would like, in the future time, to see that people that are appointed in consultation with the Director and/or Commission Chair, but there should be some kind of a collaboration so we can tell what the skills are that we need on the commission and what the goals are, so people kind of know ahead of time, and that we have a real variety. I found in the charge, and I don't know if you're also going to do the charge of whatever commission is put up,
Yeah, but it's
That we need to state upfront our community's commitment to affirmative action slash diversity slash equal opportunities. I'd put all three of them in there, so that it's open, that we still have that commitment, and we're trying to find a way to fulfill that. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was that the oversight duties of the commission, we've had difficulty fulfilling that, because there isn't data. We need to get the data format set up so that we can find out if the, the pool for the hiring is diversified, and how is it done, and whether the kind of advertisements that we're sending out to attract people to job offers are really in keeping with the time of life that this is, 2013. You know, the whole social information swing of things, I mean, and we can't really sit back and wait for people to come to us, I mean, that's apparent. We have to go out and seek people, meaning we have to go into other communities, other professional organizations, and really do outreach, and it may mean that we do job fairs, or go to other people's communities' job fairs, and really build collaboration so that we really can attract people that will, you know, bring new ideas and new ways of coping with some of these issues. Our goals were civil rights, youth advocacy, and intergroup relations, and we hope that we can have both the staff and the talent on the Board to help do these things, and the money that's needed in these very poor times to do that, and that's what I think ours. I had some criticism of some, not criticism, but I just wanted to add other information to this charge, and if it's not going to CTOS, whatever charge goes to whatever commission that's set up or committee, I think really we have to look at the language. The language is so confusing, and I'm sure that when you tried to read through, you might have seen that. Terminology is used interchangeably, "Human Relations," capital H, capital R, "Human Services," capital H, capital S, "Human Resources," small h, small r, so I don't know if that's referring to the Human Resource Board, or that's another way of talking about human services. And I was wondering if we were supposed to be giving CPR or inoculations to people throughout the town, just the way of reading it. Times have changed, we need to really seriously look at it, and one of our commission members has provided us with enormous amounts of reading. And anyway, we need to look at that. And as I said, a moderators' blue ribbon committee is better, and I believe Northeastern University and its Ducauca Center would be a good start. And I also mentioned something about Harvard that I'm not going to say. All right? And if we have to look broader for minority citizens to get involved, and that's what we have to do, we have to look at other organizations, maybe outside of Brookline, where some of the minority members would be willing to come and help us set up whatever situations that we need to have. And I think that's mainly, but the confusion is there, and I think there has to be collaboration between both of these departments, and we don't often see that, and I think that it's something that we need to do. We're not in competition, really, with each other. We're trying to find our way, and we're trying to do our duty of oversight. And if we're blocked, then that's not going to happen, and then there are repercussions from the community about that, because in 40 years, you know, we don't have many representations of other cultures on our various committees, and certainly not on the commission, and not in the workforce as well. So we're hoping that we can all work together, and I think that it's a possibility to do. We just have to put our heads together and move on. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just one quick question.
Sure. Wait, don't go. Selectmen, Banker.
Rita, you made clear your preference for a moderators' committee as opposed to a Selectmen's Committee. How would you feel about CTOS?
I felt, going through this, and I read a document that I was given today about a report from the CTOS of 1983, and then I read a report from the CTOS Committee that was working on revising and changing some things, and it made me change. I don't think the CTOS is, at this point, the group to study this. I would really like to see people on the outside who have been dealing with the affirmative action in many, many towns and cities, and there, there's a different view of it than maybe people that have been staying in town and trying to deal with other kinds of issues. I'd like not to see this as a complete reorganization plan only. I mean, we're dealing with things that are important, like, we'd like to oversee what the departments are doing, and that, not going to them, but relying on the Human Relations or Human Resources Department to gather the data. And if we're not gathering data, then how do we know what's happening, you know? And if that's our responsibility, then that's what we want to do. And we need cooperation in order to do that. But the CTOS, I didn't think that this particular topic, because of what I read in those documents, the confusion over terminology, the confusion over what happened, the lack of time to gather resources, the lack of skills to know where to look for resources or data, or information, or what's going on in other communities in this particular thing, it would take a really long time commitment, I think, for CTOS, although some of the members of the present CTOS Board may have been involved from early on and have an awareness of it.
Okay.
Quick question.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Rita, thanks for your comments, very, very useful. Given though that Town Meeting isn't until May, and I'm aware that there may very well be a warrant article that
Or two or three.
Or two or three. It just seems to me we're going to lose, you know, four, five months until Town Meeting. Is that a reason to make this a Selectmen's Committee, and maybe have it endorsed by Town Meeting, or?
You see where a rush has done, if you read the 1983 CTOS report, without any kind of supporting data or research. It's just going to be what someone thinks should happen, or thinks did happen. It's a lot of material to go through, and I've found that the moderators' committees that are put together have less suspect, and I don't mean that you're all suspicious characters, but in this instance, when there's something happening that impacts affirmative action and the view of the outside world, and for people that are impacted by it, I think it's better that you get a more independent group of skilled people, and I think the Ducauca Center at Northeastern has experience in doing these kinds of things. And we're not the only community that's going through a reevaluation of what took place years ago, and what, what has to be done now to make things work the way they should, so that we're getting some success rather than, well, duplication and stress, and then reorganization. I would hope this wouldn't just be a reorganization task, and that we really try to get to solving some of the problems that are being voiced. But I, you'll do what you feel the need to do, but that's my opinion.
Thank you.
I'm not sure the moderator will
Be happy.
To hear my opinion, but
He may not be.
Yeah, I'm sure of that.
Well, actually, if you want to know, I posed the question to the moderator, and he said
Yes.
He thought the two commissions should sit down and sort things out first. That was his suggestion, so he may have changed his mind about that. Selectmen Daley.
I just want to respond to that a little bit. The reason I think a Selectmen's Committee is better, because we have the, I mean, we can set up a very diverse committee, and we have some resources that we could reach out, and perhaps, I don't want to make Mr. Kleckner fall off his chair there, but we might have some resources to spend some money to consult with the Ducauca Center or something like that. We might, we can call upon staff to help us work through things, whereas a moderators' committee does not have the same resources. So that was one of my thoughts, that it, this is a very complicated issue, and that we would be able to bring a few more, quite, quite a few more resources to bear on the problem.
As long as it increases workplace diversity, and that we have that commitment in town, I think, you know, whatever you decide to do, just my preference would be the other, but, you know, it's up to you, what you feel.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other questions. You do have a couple of your commissioners here, or anybody else want to add to this before we move on? We don't probably, I don't think we're going to take action tonight, so there's no urgency.
Sure.
My name's Brian Hoekleyner, I'm the newest
We're going to learn how to pronounce your name, just say it again.
I'm the newest member of the commission. I have just sort of joined in the last few weeks, and I was here a month ago or so. And so I feel like I've got a unique perspective on some of this stuff. I don't, I don't profess to know as much about the history as other people, and I know there's been a lot of discussions about sort of what we can do better here in the town to increase diversity. I guess what I would just say is, I think what I would add is that I've been reading a lot of stuff recently, talking to different people that are involved, trying to understand the issues and the history, and I think sort of two things that I've taken away. One is that there really is a confusion in terms of the bylaws and how they work, and it seems like people just haven't focused on it. And I, and I think there's different reasons for that, but I do think it's good to take it up and for, for there to be some group, and I'm, I think I'm sort of agnostic about what the right group is, I think it should be a diverse group, but I think it should be a group that takes up this question. The second thing I think I would say that I've taken away in just the last few weeks of joining the commission and attending some of their meetings and hearing about this, is that there really is a group of articulate, thoughtful, intelligent people on the commission that are interested in, in, you know, moving this issue forward and, and sort of, and making progress on it, and I think, you know, it's just good to figure out how we can capitalize on that and, and sort of put those efforts, you know, into a more productive mode. Which takes me to kind of the bylaws, and I guess, and the charge, and I think I have two comments on that. One is just that, you know, if you read the bylaws, one thing that they seem to contemplate is that there's, there's a department of Human Relations Youth Resources, and I think that the reality is that there's been sort of one person who's been the Director, and that person is retiring in the next couple of months, and so it presents an opportunity to sort of And so it presents an opportunity to sort of look at what the right organizational structure is in terms of the commission's relationship to the town, and sort of how that should work. And I think that should be part of what is looked at as, through this effort. And then I think the second thing, and this takes me back to why, in some ways, why maybe this hasn't been looked at, is there's just this natural confusion about the names of these two bodies.
I would go back to personnel and I blink.
There's Human Resources and Human Relations, and I can't tell you how many times I've, even people that are on the commission, when they're talking about it, will get the names backwards. And I really think that, at the end of the day, it just comes down to Human Relations Youth Resources is a confusing name, and people don't really know what exactly it is, what it does, what it is. And so I would say, I think names are important, and I think that one thing that could be looked at as part of this is figuring out, is that the right name for this body? Should it be, I mean, is it really a civil rights commission, a diversity commission, equal opportunity? What are the, what is the charge of that commission? Human Relations is very broad, and Youth Resources is kind of off in a different direction. So I think that, not to, you know, put too much emphasis on just the words, but I do think they're important, and I think it should be part of, a part of this, what this committee or group ends up looking at when they're thinking about these things.
Well, I will tell you that I get tongue-tied every time I try to say these things, and I think I do understand, we changed personnel to Human Resources because, at the time, and maybe it still is, that was a broader definition of, I'm going to say, because it has now more responsibilities that are broader than just hiring. And so Human Resources, I mean, I think you look around in academia, you know, you're going to find a Human Resources Department--
Right.
--among other things. But I would immediately go back to personnel if we were allowed to do that. Or maybe a better name, whatever it is. But I think you're right, and it is true. It adds, in a kind of crazy way, to the confusion. So--
Yeah.
--thinking of good names and clear names.
And I think that, you know, to the extent our goal is to attract more diverse members to the commission, you know, if it was called the Civil Rights Commission or something, that might attract--
Yep.
--some different people who wouldn't necessarily want to be a member of a commission if they were having a little more trouble figuring out exactly what it was that they were doing there.
I would certainly think, whatever else the group does, whoever appoints it, that should be part of an explicit recommendation, is that they think of names that are both clear, but also not confusing.
Distinct.
And distinct, right. I think, but that's, in a way, that's symbolic of the task, which is to untangle the areas where there are overlaps and the areas where there is lack of clear mission, in my view. I know that a couple of years ago, the then-chair of the commission had an idea about something he wanted to do, and he called it "listening to the community." And the idea was to basically invite people to talk to the commission about, and here you can fill in the blanks, so to speak, their experience finding housing, or in other ways, whether they were candidates for employment or worked for the town, but just, you know, reach out to different communities and use that as a way of helping the commission sort of get a focus. Never happened, and I don't know if that's the right thing to do. But I do think community outreach, and interestingly, that was part of what was originally asked. I mean, when the 1970 bylaw was passed, it seems that the, there was an enormous burden placed on this group of volunteers, just in terms of the breadth of tasks that they were being assigned. So somehow we have to find a way to make it both manageable and effective, and I think that's very important.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak? Sure. Let's, yeah. Come on.
My name is Brooks Ames. I am the chairman of the Diversity Subcommittee of the Human Relations Commission. I don't really speak for anyone but myself here tonight, and I think Rita would probably acknowledge that that's the case for her as well. We have not, as a group, taken up your charge and looked at it carefully and come to a collective decision. My impression, however, is that the commission is not of one mind in terms of what the way forward is here. One thing that is not addressed in the charge is that there are two policy differences that I think have been presented. In the plan that was put forth by our commission, or recommended to the selectmen by our commission, was a equal opportunity and affirmative action plan. Another plan or policy was put forth by the Human Relations, sorry, Human Resources Board, and that is an equal opportunity plan. And I do think that words matter. When we put together our equal opportunity and affirmative action plan, we drew heavily from Governor Patrick's executive order on affirmative action. And our plan does contemplate some form of affirmative action. There is an enormous amount, I think, of, there's a lot of space between a strict equal opportunity plan and a aggressive affirmative action plan. And it's not clear to me, from where I sit, that the selectmen as policymakers for the town have come to ground on where we are. My sense, in the back and forth that's gone on in the last few months, is that there is a strong view in the town council's office that we can't even say the word affirmative action. And I think that the policy choices have been too constrained by the legal advice. And when you have, when we have Governor Patrick, who after all was the architect of, or he may not say he was the architect, but he was part of the team behind President Clinton's "end it, don't mend it, don't end it" approach to affirmative action back in the mid-'90s. When you have Governor Patrick putting out an executive order of affirmative action, when you have the state agencies having affirmative action plans, I think it's too constrained to narrow the debate, to narrow the policy choices to just equal opportunity. I think the town does need to consider and look at affirmative action. And it's not clear to me that this charge really takes any of that on. It's, the charge is really about the organizational chart, and it doesn't get to that more fundamental policy question. And I think that that's a real issue that the town needs to grapple with. We had, the selectmen adopted an affirmative action plan in 1994, and in 2000 or 2001, it simply fell off the map. And I think that there should be a bit of an accounting for why that came to be. There was no Supreme Court case that came out in 2000 or 2001 that changed the landscape suddenly. That's just not the case. That's not what happened. So I think the town does need to understand what happened with affirmative action in the town, and what the selectmen's position is on affirmative action.
Questions? Well, we've got Ms. Ames before us. I'm going to respond by saying that I would not expect that we would limit this study in any way. So I think maybe your concerns are, what I would hope personally is that we would, in fact, have a thorough, and here you can fill in the blanks, investigation, study, review of what the current best practices are, which could absolutely include whatever the state's doing. But it does not mean that we would be limited to discussion only of, do we do affirmative action, or do we do equal opportunity? It would be, what is the best way to go forward, as opposed to a debate over language? And I think we would all agree that our goal is to have an inclusive community, to have a diverse community, and to have a diverse workforce.
My point was only that the charge, which came out on Friday, didn't address that.
And I think what we've already agreed to here is that the charge is too narrow, and we're not going to adopt this charge. It was a sort of first take, but it by no means represents that we've agreed to go ahead with it. Does that help at all?
I suppose it does. I'm, part of my hesitation is that I was here, I think, in 2011, when the first diversity report came out, and you indicated at that time that you were going to form a selectmen's committee, which was going to be headed up by Selectman Romell, to evaluate and look at the existing plan and what might be done to change it. That never got off the ground. What we have now is an issue where two policies are in front of the selectmen, and the selectmen can take those up and give some direction. And I'm not sure that kicking the can down the road with a commission or a committee is really the right move. I think it's time to sort of tee this up for town meeting. And again, this is my personal view. I'm not speaking for the commission. I'm speaking for myself. But I think that there are others in town who think that town meeting is the right forum to get some of these issues on the table. There was no debate, there was no public comment, when the affirmative action plan that the selectmen adopted in 1994 was discontinued. And it seems to me that when the town, town meeting legislates, essentially legislates affirmative action back in 1970, or whenever it was, that if we're going to discontinue it, it should happen right out in the open, and it should be public, and town meeting should weigh in. That's my personal view.
Ultimately, that has to happen. I don't think you've understood. What we've been discussing here is how you get all of the information you need in order to make a good decision, not whether it should ever go to town meeting. There's no way we could change anything without having it go before town meeting. It has to go before town meeting. It's more a matter of in what form and when. It's not a matter of, does town meeting, it has to be discussed if we are going to make any kind of substantial revisions.
I agree with you entirely, and I think it may just be a difference of opinion as to what the best way to get it in front of town meeting is, whether it's a commission. And my sense is that it's hard to find a commission that's really going to be disinterested. And so, and many, many times, it seems to me the best way to air out an issue is to have people who have different views express them as best they can, and then people will make up their minds.
I think we would agree on that one. The question is how much information they have before they express their opinions. Selectmen Goldstein?
I'll pick up on that, Chairman DeWitt. So, Ms. Ames, my understanding is that since the time that the town adopted affirmative action policy, that there have been some court-ordered interpretations and some constitutional decisions made. And forgive me, because it's not my field, but I mean, I couldn't begin to tell you what the current standards are and what the judicial mandates on the subject are. My understanding is that it's a very complicated subject, and I question whether the floor of town meeting is the place for 350 people who have to make an intelligent decision on that, to, you know, and hear an hour's worth of debate, whether that's the correct way to resolve that argument. It seems to me a perfect case for when you need some, an organization of disinterested and unbiased people to carefully examine it and lay out the parameters, lay out the points and counterpoints of the argument, so that a more careful consideration could be made than is possible on the floor of town meeting.
Well, I'm not sure you're giving town meeting enough credit. There's a lot of process that goes, there's a lot that goes on between when an article is presented and when it's actually heard by town meeting. It goes in front of this, your body, goes in front of the selectmen. There's a public hearing. There's a hearing in front of a subcommittee of the advisory committee. There's a hearing before the full advisory committee. There's groups in town that have hearings. So there are certainly opportunities for people to get information and for views to be expressed and heard.
Respectfully, you know, I think that there's a limited number of people who involve themselves, town meeting members who involve themselves in that process, and there are subset of town meeting who do not generally involve themselves in the ongoing process leading up to town meeting. And I think those are the people for whom, you know, some kind of a considered report is most useful, beyond what you'd usually see in the selectmen's and in the advisory committee's report.
I don't want to interrupt, but I will say that I was totally inspired by the Committee on Urban Responsibilities report, in terms of the thought that went into it and the level of detail. Now, we're not going to put 130 people on the project now, I think. Those were different times. But I do think, and I agree with you, there are thoughtful people who could be engaged in this, but I will say that the same breadth and level of thought would inform all of us, as opposed to, and I'm not imagining it's exactly what would happen, but right now, we could find ourselves very narrowly focused on sort of regulatory issues, whereas it seems to me it's very important to think about community values and how we do the best we can to implement those values, and they certainly include diversity. You know, it's interesting that the Core Report talked about Metco. Metco is at risk right now, and Metco is important to this community, but nobody talks about it except by way of whether or not we can afford to have it anymore. And it seems to me that that's another sort of example of something that could be, we could do a better job at being advocates than we currently do, but it's not part of just discussing workforce diversity. It's more than that. It's how we mentor, how we create the environment where everybody feels welcome and comfortable. And you can't do that by discussing whether it's equal opportunity or affirmative action. It's got to have a broader, more thoughtful approach. That's my view.
I don't think there's anything wrong with looking at Metco, but I don't think that that's really the issue that's in front of, it's not part of the charge, certainly. And even if the charge were broader, I'm not sure it would be.
It was a draft.
Yeah, it was a draft, but I--
A discussion.
I think we're talking about two different things a little bit. I mean, right now, we have, you are drawing up guidelines, and the Human Resources Board is drawing up another set of guidelines. And I think the question we're trying to get at is, whose responsibility is that? And you're asking us to say-- And you're asking us to say, you know, and in 2000, town meeting did give some significant responsibility to the Human Resources Board, and obviously, you know, they didn't really consider or think about, well, wait a minute, we're kind of maybe, are we taking this away from human relations, or what? And so, you want us to jump to the issue of exactly what the policy should be, when there's sort of a preliminary question, I think, about, you know, whose responsibility is it, and who should we on this board and others in town be listening to when we're getting competing reports from different groups? I think that's sort of what I was trying to get at with this charge. But certainly, the committee could, and we could, you know, could discuss your issue of exactly what policy is the most appropriate in this day and age. And we could try to get, you know, get some people on there who are scholars in this area, or perhaps...
Well, I'm not advocating for a committee to study affirmative action. My view is that it should be taken up as part of the political process, and that commissions aren't always the best way to take up a political issue.
Okay, well, I just would respond to that, that I think that there are a lot of issues involved. We have collective bargaining agreements with our employees, and so, you know, that's, I don't know if that's your legal area of expertise or not, but that, we have to think about policies as they work within our collective bargaining, too, if you're talking about existing employees. So, there's also the sort of case law that has been changing, and, you know, on these, this sort of area. Unfortunately, I don't think any of us on here are particular fans of the current Supreme Court, but there have been a number of opinions that, you know, we have to also consider, to what extent do we wanna expose the town to liability? That's a concern for us, 'cause we're, you know, the bottom line has to be something we worry about, the budget, too. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that play into this, and, you know, I think we certainly have to be concerned with the bigger picture, and that's why I do think that it would be helpful to have somebody take a look at a number of aspects here, and, but as I say, this is still a draft, and it doesn't have to be exactly this way, but I do think that a committee with some people with significant expertise in this area would be very helpful.
Well, you do have, you do have a constitutional law expert, I would say, on your board. I'm sure he has a view.
He will speak for himself.
I, well, one comment that I would like to make is that I think there are two issues, and I think, Brooks, you distinguish between them, and I think Mr. Hochleider did also. There's the question of the policies, guidelines, whatever you wanna call them, however you wanna title them, and there's also the question of the organizational structure. And I, one thing that I would be very concerned about is the, not just the interaction between this and our union contracts, but also the interaction between this and the state open meeting law. And the requirements of the open meeting law, insofar as we're talking about issues like promotion or hiring, or issues of that sort, an exception under the open meeting law is, you can go into executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges brought against a public employee. And the commentary of the Attorney General on this is that the purpose is designed to protect the rights and reputations of individuals. Nevertheless, it appears that where a public body is discussing an employee evaluation, considering applicants for a position, or discussing the qualifications of any individual, these discussions should be held in open session, to the extent that the discussion deals with issues other than the ones of reputation, and health and character, and so forth. So, I think, you know, we've gotta have a human resources department where questions of promotion and so forth are decided and monitored, rather than on the department level. I think that sort of issue can't be something that a public committee does, whether it's the Human Resources Commission or the Human Relations Youth Resources Commission. And I think, you know, we have to be cognizant of the impacts of what is being discussed on the town's employees and on their privacy. And to the extent that there are suggestions that some of these things, like administering these policies, should bubble up to a committee level, I think we have to be very careful about doing that. So, you know, it's not, it's not an easy question, and, but it is a question that goes well beyond, I think, the question of what is allowed under affirmative action. And it is, it is clear to me that there are some things that, some affirmative steps that can still be taken under the, under the current court. But for our purposes, as a municipality, operating in Massachusetts under the state open meeting law and its requirements for things to be discussed in public, and as a community with employees, some represented by unions, some not represented by unions, but all interested in their privacy, I do think we have to be pretty careful about where we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Farlow?
Chairman.
You gotta come over there, otherwise you don't exist. Sorry, Frank. You have to speak into the little black...
Frank Farlow, Precinct 4. If the board does request an outside study from some group, do you anticipate at the moment, do you have any expectation at the moment of what you will include as a requested reporting date?
Very good question, and hard to answer right now, except that I would suggest, based on what, I guess I'm gonna reflect to you what Jean Berg said, okay? She said if it were referred to her, she'd require a year, all right? And she has some experience doing things like this. So, and that's the only, only benchmark I have at this moment.
I should think, though, that if we were paying somebody to do this, that-
It all depends on how it's done, right? If it's-
Could be less time, is my guess.
It could be less time. What I would suggest is that the probability, just because it's very complicated, and I know just getting a group up to speed and organized, I mean, there's a massive material here, as you well know. I don't see how it could be done by the May Town Meeting, not done in a way that we would all find satisfactory, anyway. Maybe the fall. But that's my best answer. Okay? Any other questions, comments, members of the board? All right. Just to be clear, we had a draft that was brought before us in a way to stimulate this discussion. We've certainly, I think, among ourselves, agreed that a referral at this time to CTONS is not appropriate, and so, it will probably come back to the calendar in a different form over the next couple of weeks, maybe after we've had some time to think about it.
So, let me just say that I will go back to the drawing board, so if anyone wants to contact me with specifics, right, they feel free to do so.
Can I just-
We actually have a footnote here.
Because next week, I will be producing or presenting my budget, my fiscal year budget, and as was pointed out, the director of the department has announced his resignation, his retirement, effective in April. So, I will definitely, my budget will definitely be talking about the staffing and organization of the staff component to the commission and to the programming of human relations and human resources. And just to complicate things even further, there's a human services component in the Health Department that I'm certainly considering and thinking about how all these things relate to one another. So, I don't want people to be surprised, and I will be making some recommendations about the way in which the department and the programs are staffed and organized, and certainly have no concern about those being reviewed in the context of any study the board determines will be appropriate.
Okay. I think we conclude the Board of Selectmen's meeting for February 5th. Thank you all.